We'll call to order the January 19th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me if you are able in stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Due to the ongoing pandemic, we see that it's impossible or impractical to have a full house here at the public meeting room. So per Code Section 21.8.1, we are offering public accessibility via Zoom. With that, I'm asking for adoption of the today's agenda.
I would second what was had changed on it, if I might ask you. Assistant Honor Mark is going to present a quarterly financial report under item 18, and I would ask that we move that to, excuse me, right after consent. She's got additional items in 16, and we move it to her after 16A. Is that the additional items?
So, okay, so additional items in 16. So are you, are you, because we don't have any departmental reports that would then be, right after that would be 18, so I'm just confused for your.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Are you, are you asking that she goes straight into her quarterly financial report after discussing the resolution?
Yes.
So after the public hearing?
After the additional item. She has the public hearing item, she has the first one.
Oh, number 16, so right after that to move into the financial report. So right after, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so after additional item one is where you would like to know.
16.1, 18, 16.1, I'd make those a friendly amendment.
Yes, okay, okay. So the motion is to approve the agenda with the addition of moving the other reports, the Story County Quarterly Financial Report, to come under the additional items after additional item one. The motion was moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. All those in favor, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Head and side. Okay, we'll move on to if there's any updates on COVID-19, anything from staff? Just wait a second, see if any staff are gonna unmute themselves. Don't see anything there, okay. Supervisors, any updates on COVID-19?
I'd just like to remind the public that Public House is putting notices on the Mary Greeley Medical Center website regarding when vaccines will be available. And so several questions over the weekend on social media, people were saying they're lying. And so I published that on my Facebook page, but I would just encourage everybody to go there. Maybe we could even put something on our website and link to that specific vaccine link that they have on.
It's under news release.
Yeah, yeah, because somebody said, I didn't see it on the county website. I said, well, we just, it just came out. But yeah, anything we can do to tell people, go to Mary Greeley Medical Center's website or go to McFarland Clinic if you want to get an email from McFarland, if that's your provider or check with your provider, because I'm already getting emails through McFarland. So I just wanted to mention that to people.
I'll just give us a quick update. Sorry, I don't have it from day to day, but I did notice that statewide we have 306,233 positive cases and 4,332 deaths. Story County has 8,658 positives and 34 total deaths. So that's the update that I have so far. Now we'll move on to public comment. This comment purges for the public to address comment, to address topics on today's agenda. If you have a public comment, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom. We'll unmute you, or it's, is it star nine? Star nine, I don't know why I get that, that star nine if you're via phone call. And I'll just wait a few seconds to see if anyone has any public comments. Again, are you seeing anything? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. We have none. Agency reports. We have the Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report. And, yes, hi Brett. So we've gotten your report ahead of time, are there some areas that you'd like to highlight or review within the report?
Good morning, Lisa and the board. Not really, you've got everything there. Is there anything on the report you want me to cover?
That's what I'm just asking you, are there things you want to highlight on the report, Brett?
Well, the attachment, I would like to highlight that part. I did a study, if you're looking at the geographical distribution of federal benefits, I wanted to present this to the board. I went back to FY15 and FY19. Now, the VA is about a year behind on this data. So this is the most current that I have.
Brett, Brett.
Yeah.
When you turn your head, we can't hear you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. Okay, is that better?
It is, yes.
Okay, so I mean, I just want to go through this, just so you can understand some of these things. But if you look at the first column there, veteran population, you can see over the years it's dropped. It was a drastic drop from 15 to 16 with 1,345 veterans. After that, it's been around 42, 43, 46 in the last year. Now, even that being said, population going down, the total benefits have been going up. And just looking at the last year, it went up $2.9 million. The year before, $700,000. The year before that, it went down, and the two years previous, it stayed the same. Now, these are dollars going from the federal government, going to veterans and surviving spouses. And boy, we sure hope they spend those dollars in Story County, right? Looking at where did they come from? Well, comp and pen, which is, it's compensation for injuries incurred on active duty. And the pen is for pension for low income. That's increased by 1.7 million over the last year, bringing that to 13.3. And you can see those numbers. Looks like they've been increasing over the years. So we're heading in the right direction on filing claims, it looks like to me. Vote Rehab, these are veterans that are, they're already service-connected, and we got them into Vote Rehab to go back to school. This isn't the GI Bill. This is a Vote Rehab program. And as you can see, we're at 3.8. The year before, 3.5, the year before that, 3.8. And so that kind of jumps around a little bit. Not much we can do there, except for when we have veterans that are unemployed and they're service-connected, we can get them back in school. Medical has been going up, and that's when we enroll veterans in VA healthcare. That's kind of what we do there, to get medical, to go, you know, for veterans to get medical. And as you can see, over the last year, it went from 8.7 million to 10.1. Moving in the right direction there. Unique patients is how the VA counts. So that 1,013 is their unique patients for that fiscal year. They, if a veteran has three appointments in a week, they get counted once. So that's kind of, those numbers get a little bit strange that way, but everybody just counted once. And then over at the end there, I just kind of put average benefit per veteran, looking at the population and what we have coming in. Now, not every veteran is getting a benefit. But I mean, that's just kind of averaging everything out. So I just wanted to bring that to the board. I usually report on this each year at this time, on how we're doing. And I've already reported this to the commission. We feel like we're heading in the right direction. And I kind of set a personal goal here for the office, to hit 30 million next year with benefits. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that the board might have.
Board?
You answered my one question, which is why no FY20 data? You answered my question about the FY20 data.
Okay, yeah, yeah, next year at this time, I'll give you those numbers. Hopefully, I'm reporting something to you really close to 30 million. You know, if you think about that, that's like a pretty good-sized business moving into the county. If you think of those dollars that's coming in, I mean, that's just, that's just awesome. And if I reflect back to 1999, when I started, it was around 3 million. So we're doing good.
Yes, you are. I don't have any questions, I just want to say good job increasing the number of vets you're able to help and the benefits you're able to get them. And I'm glad in your report that it looks like planning's still ongoing for the Freedom Flight, even though everything's kind of, I'm sure, up in the air. But I'm glad that's still in the works.
Yeah, the Freedom Flight is canceled, all flights between now and March, and we'll see what holds after that. But May's still on the table, and definitely in the fall. Hopefully, we can, we can get those folks out there to see their memorials. You know, for some of them, it's their first and last trip to Worston, DC. So it's pretty, pretty awesome to be part of that and to help these veterans get out to, it's a long day, help them see their, their memorials. It's pretty awesome.
Well, thanks Brett. I have one, just one question. The veteran population that you've seen the reduction of, and I don't know if you would know the answer to this, do you know if there's a good percentage that are moving out of state? I know that was a question, or it's an issue that you would bring down to the Capitol at times. So I don't know how much numbers come into play there, or if it's just, you know, veterans that have passed away or something else. But I just didn't know if you're seeing a larger influx that are just moving out of the state or out of the Capitol here.
No, I mean, we do have, you know, you answered, why is that going down? It's only two answers, they either moved out of the county or passed away. And we do have quite a, I mean, I see 46 on there. That's probably veterans, mostly veterans that passed away. But we do have some that, you know, I had one that called me yesterday and moved to Polk County. So, and of course, if you look at the, the college population in there, you know, they're, they're probably a pretty good chance that they're moving somewhere, I suppose. But I don't really have the breakdown on that. But looking at how many Armed Forces grave registrations we have coming in, I mean, the 40s is probably pretty much the norm. But if I go back to that, between 15 and 13, that was probably a lot of people moving out of the county there at 1,200, over 1,200, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your report today, Brett.
You bet. Thanks, everybody, have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll move on. We have a presentation on an economic development district for central Iowa. I believe we have Dan Calhain, and I'm not sure if Brenda Dryer's on as well. Who's presenting?
Good morning, supervisors. I'm joined this morning with Dan. Nick is on the line from our offices. I see Mark Jackson's joining us. And I'm here really just to do an introduction of today's topic. A number of us received an email from Laura Olson as a follow-up to a meeting we had late in 2020 regarding formation of an economic development organization in central Iowa. There were some questions as a part of that conversation. We identified where we need to go in terms of next steps. And I think the purpose of today is really to provide the Story County Board of Supervisors an overview, presentation of what an EDO is, what would the benefit be to the communities in Story County? And maybe a little bit about, you know, how does it really supplement the efforts that a number of us are already doing in the county? So Dan or Mark, any other comments you'd make at this time before we hand it over to Andrew and Gunner?
This is Dan, I've got nothing to add. I think this is a unique opportunity, and, and we appreciate the invitation from the Des Moines MPO.
Any words, Mark?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew and Gunner. And I'll let you guys introduce yourself, the organization you present, and then I'll let you get into the presentation that's been provided.
Thanks Brenda, my name's Todd Ashby, I'm the director at the Des Moines Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. We also do transportation planning for the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance for the seven and eight county area around central Iowa. We first started looking at economic development districts a couple of years ago, how they were formed, what they entailed. And Andrew will get into the more specifics, but when the pandemic hit and the presidential declaration was made for regarding that, that provided an opportunity to, to push this idea forward again. So we appreciate your time today, and I'll turn it over to Andrew to walk through the presentation.
Thank you, Todd. Hello, everyone. My name is Andrew Collings, I'm the principal planning here at the Des Moines Area MPO. I also manage the SERPA, Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance for Story County, and I also administer the Story County Housing Trust. So I, thank you for having us today, thanks for the introductions, everybody. And yes, Gunner, we can see your slides. So with that, I will jump into the presentation. If anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in. Obviously, the time later at the end, but if you have anything pressing, please just let me know. So before we jump into exactly what an economic development district is, we usually try to start this off with showing you where they are. So on the map, on the right, you can see, just a map of all the EDDs, Economic Development Districts in Iowa. They, they cover the entire state. There's only one part of the state that isn't part of an economic development district, and that is central Iowa. Those are the counties of Boone, Dallas, Story, Jasper, Polk, Marion, and Warren. And then on the map, on the left, you can see just where EDDs are across the United States. As you can see, they cover quite a bit of areas. They cover areas very large, very rural populations, and pretty much everywhere in between. And as Todd mentioned, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, national emergency declaration, this is the first time that we've been eligible here in central Iowa to form an economic development district, and that since the 2008 floods. And just to give you an idea that we're not the only ones exploring this, thank you to our friends at the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and put us in touch with the City of Indianapolis, Marion County. They are also going to be forming an economic development district due to the disaster declaration in Indiana. Next slide. So what exactly is an economic development district? Well, at its most basic function, it is a designation by the United States Economic Development Administration. So this designation is given to regions that have experienced economic distress. Here in central Iowa, we traditionally don't meet the economic distress metrics the EDA looks at. So we all, we, we are eligible to form an EDD due to disaster declarations. And that is why our discussion on disaster declarations today. So these are regions, they're multi-jurisdictional in nature, they're often mostly comprised of multiple counties, and they're put together to plan for the economic resiliency of a region and then provide support for member communities. And here's where we try to distinguish this from your traditional economic development activities that are undertaken and that have been going on for a while. So EDDs are not a chamber of commerce, or like the partnership or the Ames Chamber. They're not like your development offices or your, the cities and counties have, and they don't recruit business. So an EDD really is designed to support community development for its members, aka the cities and counties of the region. They, just much, much like the Ames Chamber and the Greater Des Moines Partnership to an extent, support business development businesses in the region. The EDD really supports its member communities, which are the cities and counties. So really, they're two sides of the same coin. I also like to point out that EDDs really enhance already what's taking place in local jurisdictions. They don't replace anything that's already happening. They just provide another tool for your, for the local community's toolbox and really supports activities that want to, that are proposed to happen and are, and already taking place. Next slide. So to give you an idea of just some of the benefits, during major disasters, EDDs are the first entities to receive disaster funding from EDA. So for example, COVID-19 CARES Act, there was some funding that came through EDA. All of the economic development districts in Iowa received $470,000 in no-match funding that they are using to combat COVID-19-related impacts that central Iowa just did not get. So that is something that we missed out on, and we would like in moving forward to be able to get. Overall, annual funding is provided for, to staff the, and administer the economic development district. That does require a local match. But overall, EDDs do improve applications for federal funding just due to having the EDD in place showing that need, and also due to having already undertaken some of the activities that are needed to form an economic development district, which I'll get to here in a second. But some of the other benefits include providing staff support just for applications and administration of grants. There are a lot of grants out there, not just EDA grants, but other grants that are, can be complicated and cumbersome to administer due to the federal requirements that are attached to those. But also just identifying funding opportunities themselves, just at various levels of government. Again, not just EDA funding. But also, this, this fills in gaps for supporting projects for communities that may or may not move forward, or might need some additional assistance to get moving. This can provide the staff support for that. And regionally, in order to form an economic development district, we have to create what's called a comprehensive economic development strategy, or SEDS, which basically catalogs and prioritizes projects and improves the competitiveness of grant applications. So this isn't, again, not meant to supplant any of the local economic development planning that has already taken place. It's really more of a way to categorize it, put it into a specific format for the feds, and support the existing planning efforts that have already taken place. So incorporating data from your local comprehensive plans, tomorrow plan, capital crossroads are listed in there. But again, any other economic development planning that's gone today will be included. Next slide. Just to give you an idea of the EDA-type funding and what they fund through their grant programs that this would help apply for, you have 1.7 million that was given to the city of Cedar Rapids to help relocate a water main for floodwater D and C for the Quakeros factory. There were a couple of awards for some technical training on retraining at the community colleges around the state. Sioux City got some funding for their Gateway Airport project, and then City of Dyersville got a million dollars for their Field of Dreams project. So what would it take to form an economic development district? Well, one, we've, we've already knocked out, and that's that every county be part of a presidentially declared disaster declaration, because we don't meet those metrics that EDA usually looks at. Two, the, the agency requesting funding has to have adequate private representation on the board. So there has to be that public-private kind of partnership to move this forward. Brenda kind of mentioned that this, it would be a new organization just because any of the organizations currently existing don't have the board structure to beat that. And then having support of all the counties within the economic development district area, and I'll get to that here in a second. Concurrent with the states, the governor's office, and then having that local match being procured. But then also having that SEDS, I mentioned that earlier, completed. Think of it like the long-range transportation plan, either the Ames MPO or SERPA have to create. But instead of focusing on transportation, it's for economic growth. So going back to the support from all the counties within the EDD area, there's actually kind of two steps to that. The most important is that counties support the creation of the economic development district. That is by support resolution. Because at the outset, in order to form the area, each county has to support it, not monetarily, just supporting it through a resolution. That's the next step, is deciding who would like, who is providing local match and whatnot. But in order for local communities such as Story City, or Nevada, or anyone else, in order for them to be able to be part of the economic development district, Story County has to be designated in that area. And all that requires is a support resolution from the board supervisor. So, and then the next step after that is, is separate. It's the request for funding, the local match portion, which comes later. Next slide. So next steps, meeting with stakeholders. Brenda mentioned that meeting we had last month. We're doing those in all of the counties in the proposed area. Meeting with county board supervisors, that's what we're here to do today. We met with Warren County a few weeks ago, they, they passed their support resolutions. We have meetings with other counties later this month. Again, all the counties and districts would have to show support for the EDD. Again, they are not required to join, that's separate. But that support resolution is the most important thing to have. And then having the state of governor, the state of Iowa, the governor, supporting the request. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. I appreciate your time, and I'll turn it over to anybody else if they would like to have anything to say.
Supervisors, questions?
I have several. Andrew, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. I looked over some of the email that Laura sent us, and, and some of the questions come from that. First, let me just ask, who would provide the staff?
Yes, the Des Moines MPO. Since we already administered the RPA as well as the Housing Trust Fund, we have contacts in all of the counties that are being looked at.
And, and in the email, it was something about a 70,000 matching grant to help pay for staff. Does that mean there would be additional staff hired by the MPO?
I would defer to Todd on that. I do believe that is the plan with those funds, but Todd can provide a little more context to that.
So, Vivian?
Yeah, initially, as we're getting this ramped up, we would do it with current staff. But as we started managing a number of grants for the local communities, just the, the volume and making sure we're doing everything we need to do, we would probably hire an additional person so that federal money, as well as the, the local match, would be used to support that staff member.
So that money would be specific, the 70 plus the 70 federal funds would be specifically for hiring an additional staff person, but you might not do it until you need the person. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, well, you know, I think it would happen shortly after the formation of it. But yeah, we initially wouldn't be requesting that money until we actually got the EDD formed and operational.
Okay, that's super. Now, how would that 70,000 be divided among the counties that agreed to join? And I see join means contribute money. Would you do that by pro-rata population?
Yeah, and Andrew can jump in here. But yes, assuming that all the counties join in, and then, you know, we'll have a number of communities as well, we would use their per capita and address some rate to that. We've looked at a number of different costs on that. I think 15 cents was kind of a conservative number per capita.
I have a question, just based off of what you said. Sure, I just need a clarifying question off of what Supervisor Merkin just said. So you said if all counties and communities join in, so are you referring to counties and cities as well? Is that how you would be calculating?
Correct, yeah. The counties are eligible to be in there. And once the counties, as Andrew was saying, are, are in the local communities, Ames, Gilbert, Nevada, they could join as well. And so all those people together, all those communities and counties together would be part of that pool.
Thank you.
Thank you. If, so you need each county board to do a resolution of support, but that's not necessarily joining and paying, correct?
Correct, yep. And, and there is, the, the joining part doesn't have to happen right away. There, there's nothing, basically, if you don't join now, you can join in the future. It's just, we understand this is a process, we're moving forward with it, looking to move forward with it. But just because you don't join now, it doesn't mean you can't join. doesn't mean you can't join in the future, but having that support resolution gives you the option to join.
And the, the local communities can't join if the county doesn't offer that support. So even if the county didn't want to join, but wanted to make it so the, the local communities could, we need that resolution of support to form the, the EDD.
What counties or other entities have joined in so far, said they're interested in joining or have said they'd do a resolution?
Um, I believe all of the counties so far, we, we've met with nearly all of them and have heard good things. Warren County has officially passed their support resolution. I, we're up next on Jasper and Marion and we're working towards the other ones right now. And I, we have, we haven't heard anything indicate they wouldn't pass the, the resolution. As far as the-
You have not talked into Boone though, because I know Linda had a conversation there, but you have not had, done a presentation yet at Boone County.
No, we're, they're, I, they're the last ones that we have not reached out to yet, but we're, we're working on that. It's, it's process to do that.
I wondered if a sample resolution was set up for Boone County?
I'm sorry, did you repeat that? I apologize.
You said the sample resolution, I must have picked it up from one of the emails. And it's just called example resolution and it had Boone County on it.
Yep.
So let's take that and redo that. Is that the resolution you're wanting?
I, I, that's, that sounds right, yes, I, I believe so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll follow up with the revised one that has Story County in it and just so everybody's on the same page.
That would be good.
Linda, we'll have, we have our own format resolution.
Oh, that's right. Leanne will have to put together, somebody will put it, put it together here because we have a resolution format.
That, that's fine as well.
Fine, yep.
You have it, okay.
Any questions?
So if you just do the resolution, but you don't join, you really don't get any benefits, you've just allowed others to go forward, correct?
Correct.
I'm, I'm, right, you've asked most of my questions.
Yes, mine too. I did have one more question. So the comprehensive economic development strategy, would we, would Story County be creating some, any limitations for us if, if there's this larger strategy created?
No. The SEDS is specifically for the EDA's Economic Development District Partnership Program. So the, the SEDS really applies to that specific program. I don't believe there's any other entity that looks at that as a requirement necessarily. Like you can, you can use that as support for different grant opportunities if you choose to, but if you don't, there's no requirement. The SEDS is specifically for the EDD program.
I just have a clarifying question and some of it's just because of the, the Zoom, the, the hearing back and forth, not always hearing what you're saying exactly. So if we move and support a resolution but don't join, does that inhibit other communities from participating or does it, is it that the county needs to join for them, those other communities to also join?
No.
Okay, Todd. If, if the county supervisors would provide a resolution of support, that would be, all that would be needed to be done to allow the communities of Story County to join the EDD. The county wouldn't have to join. They're certainly welcome to join and then the, you know, the communities can also join, but the letter of support really is kind of the, the first step in creating the EDD. After that portion is done, the communities can join or not and the county can join or not.
Yeah, I think the difference there then is then the communities, if they join, they could receive services. If the county is not, you know, a member, then they just wouldn't receive services for that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all the questions that I had at this particular time. Anything else, Supervisor?
Uh, no. Right now.
All right, and are we going to look at, I know this is just a presentation, but were we going to need them to send the Story County information or you have, you have, you have?
Leanne's going to draft a resolution if we want one.
Okay, okay. All right, great. All right, well, thank you very much for your time and the information. I also have to thank Laura Solson for the detailed emails that she provided us. So I felt a little bit more aware and up to date on, on what you are presenting today.
Yes, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, move on, there's no minutes to consider today. Consideration of personnel actions, is there a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. Consideration of claims, is there a motion to approve claims as presented?
Move to accept claims as presented, second.
Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. Consent agenda, is there a motion to, well, is anyone approving anything from the consent agenda?
No.
No, no. Okay, move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. Now we're down to the public hearing item, consideration of Resolution 21-50, the FY21 budget amendment. And that would be Lisa-
Good morning, Board. Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, yeah, what you have in front of you is the, the second of the fiscal year budget amendment. It was published on January 7th in all three newspapers, which is required for us to hold a public hearing within 10 to 20 days. Overall, the revenues from this amendment are increasing by about 1.7. 1.4 of that is CARES money and 350 is a local option sales tax increase. The expenses are increasing by 977. About 116,000 of those CARES money, CARES dollars are being amended in. And about 597,000 in spending from restricted funds. So we're increasing by 1.7% on the expenses. The ending fund balance results after this amendment. General fund unassigned equals about 30 and a half percent. Rural, about 22% and secondary roads about 33%. Anybody have any questions?
I do not, Board, any questions?
No.
No? Thank you, Lisa, as always, you have very detailed amendment information that you've provided to us. So with that, I will open the public hearing for discussion on Resolution 21-50. And if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand or hit start. And I'll wait about 30 seconds or more to see if there's anyone that's to speak on that. Leanne, are you seeing anything or something? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and ask if there is a motion to consider Resolution 21-50, the FY21 budget amendment as presented.
Oh. I hope we approve Resolution 21-50, FY21 budget amendment.
Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. Now we'll move on to additional items. We have consideration of Resolution 21-51, the FY21 appropriation amendment.
Okay, thanks, Board. Basically, in order to spend the dollars that you just amended, we have to, you have to appropriate them. So what I'm asking is that you appropriate the dollars. The department will break down auditor appropriation, additional appropriation is 69,111. Recorder, 20,000, that's out of her records management fees. Animal control, 60,000. 40 of that is out of special, or friends of animal. Engineer, 551,000, which is out of his ending fund balance. The Human Resources Center, I'm amending, recommending by, appropriating by 100, whoa, I can't talk, 1,700. Facilities Management, 5,000. Planning and Development, 11,000. The Justice Center, 3,500. And Countywide Services, 256,424.
Okay, is there any discussion on Resolution 21-51, Board? Supervisor Faisal? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve Resolution 21-51, the FY21 appropriation amendment?
Move approval of Resolution 21.51.
Moved by Merkin?
Second.
Seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. And now we are moving to the Story County Quarterly Financial Report that was moved on the agenda from number 18 to this section here. So Lisa, I believe that is you as well.
Thanks, Board. So what I do for you every quarter is give you where we're at, snapshot in the year as of the end of a quarter, 12, 31, 20 being this one. As you will notice in the report, this is before amendments, so, well, before the amendment you just approved. The auditor was, there were four departments, including the auditor and recorder, that were over 50% of the expenses for the year. So the, there will be, there are amendments on those now. Overall, we're only at 40% spending on our overall budget. The fund status, um, the balances of, we're all, we're under 50% of expenditures on all of the, the primary major funds of ours. And I've tried to give a breakdown of where we're at on restricted funds, committed funds and assigned funds in the general fund. Revenues is the second page and we have seven departments that are over 50% in revenues, which is a good trend, I like that. And overall, we're at 56% of the revenues being brought in right now. Do you have any questions on this report?
Board, any questions?
No.
No questions. Thank you for the information in the report, Lisa.
Yeah, we'll talk about these, we, we talk about these things a lot during our budget work sessions also, so it's always good to have those numbers in front of you whenever you can.
Yes, it is. Very much appreciated. So that's, so it looks like we are now back on discussion and consideration of selection of consultant to complete the Story County Space Needs Assessment Study and direct county staff to negotiate a contract with the selected contract. Joby?
Yep, good morning, I'm here.
Good morning, Joby.
Yep, so these are two consultants listed, RMH and OPN, both presented last week. Little Q and A for the board, so I'm just looking to get your selection and then get some direction to get a contract going to have Ethan work with the selected consultant. I think he would be in good hands with either one of the, the two that are listed there.
Thanks, Joby, Board, discussion?
I would tend to agree with what Joby just said. I think both of her capable, I, I did a pros and cons list, which I left someplace, so I'll try to do it from memory. I think that RMH's done lots of work with us before and are familiar with us. I did look though at the OPN, the projects they have done. They've done several county projects, they've done several city projects. They've done a lot of projects where they looked at existing space and reuse of existing space. I don't know if they talked purely in detail and in terms of their understanding of what we were asking, which is to look at how we're using our space now, could better use that before engaging in any huge construction expenses, tax company. So I just thought they, you know, I think either could do a very good job. I thought a slight edge on OPN because of their experience on similar projects, county, city, libraries, et cetera. So that's where I would be leaning.
Supervisor Faisal?
Yeah, I, I have to echo everything you just said, Linda. I was really impressed with both of them. I was really impressed with OPN's presentation. Their, her answer to all of your very pointed questions, Linda, I think demonstrated that she and they have a really good grasp on what we're looking for. So yes, I would be leaning towards OPN also.
Yeah, and I have to say too, I did kind of a pros and cons of the two as well. They were very close in their financial, you know, to, to consider. So that was something that it wasn't like hugely out of whack to say, okay, I'm not even going to look at this one because they were, so they were so very close on there. I was, they both had good information. RMH does know, the county does know our area, so that is certainly a plus. But I also looked at, like you, Linda, I looked at some of the items that OPN had done in the past and almost thought that aligned a little bit more with what we're at and what we're kind of looking at. And was very pointed with all of the questions that were addressed to her and the responses that I felt, you know, we could be confident really with either, either one, but I probably too had a leaning towards OPN as well, but was open to either one, because I think either one would do well for the county. So with that, is there a, based on, I mean, I just mentioned that, so there's any more discussion on this? Then I, based on the discussions here, is there a motion to consider the selection of OPN to consult or to consult to complete the Story County needs, Story County Space Needs Assessment Study and direct the county staff to negotiate a contract with the consultant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. All right, Joby, I think you've got some information there.
Yep, I will get moving on, getting the contract worked up. Thank you, Board.
Thanks, Joby, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for the, for the county attorney's office administrative assistant to position. And I see County Attorney Neil's on the line.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I'm asking to fill an administrative assistant position opening that was created when Mindy moved over to Driver's License reinstatement Program. So it's just a normal position that we need to have filled.
Okay, is there discussion? No? Okay, is there a motion to approve the hiring freeze exemption request for the attorney's office for the administrative assistant to position?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to, there's discussion and consideration on a hiring freeze exemption request for the county attorney intern?
Yes, we're currently looking to bring in two more interns. We're starting jury trials again beginning of February. We normally have anywhere between four and six undergrad or extra help interns working in the office. Right now, we have three. Right now, we have three. We're set to bring two more on board, so I'm asking the Board to approve those two. The request to allow us to bring people in and out on these undergrad and prosecuting intern positions without having to come to the Board would, would help us with the flexibility we need to fill these. We have to interview people one semester to hire them into the next semester. And so if the Board would grant us that, it would, it would make those transitions much easier in the overlaps. But failing that, if the Board would simply approve the two interns that were set to start in February, that would be my alternative request.
Jim, what you're really asking is to take the interns out of the hiring freeze in the process, correct? So you wouldn't, I mean, have a vacancy, have to come back to the supervisors?
That's what we're asking. It's because they, they transition in and out from semester to semester.
Okay, and the understanding would obviously be that you would not exceed the money budgeted.
Correct. This would be the normal way we were doing things before the hiring freeze started. It's just that we have several come and go each semester, and some of them stay on more than one semester. Some of them may only come for the three summer months. But it's a valuable program in that we provide public service to people who need to get credit and experience in, in school, and it also provides us with necessary extra help during trials.
I'd ask Alicia to come up here, because I have a couple of questions for her. If I thought mine?
Yes, yes. Go ahead.
So they're kind of in the extra help category. Do you think, first, do you have any problems with this? And second, do you think it would create precedence that would be problematic in any other department if we granted this?
Sure, sure. So they, they don't have a set number of staff that they hire. You know, other, other departments and offices typically have one intern, you know. Some other departments try to get a certain number of seasonal help and don't have that because of hiring issues, they can't do that. So it is a little unique in their intern program on how they transition in and out. The only concern I would have is we do have some seasonal, some departments that hire large amounts of seasonal help, and if they have somebody resign halfway through the season, we do make them come back and get that, according to the current policy. So, I mean, I would just, just let the Board be aware that, that that would be a little different if you granted this one, that other department or office would still have to come and get that seasonal help if somebody leaves. Because the way the, the hiring freeze exemption policy is, before you can hire, before the, the Board can approve a hire, they need to get this exemption.
I remember we had that with conservation.
We did last.
But we only, it was only one.
One position.
It was only one, because it was somebody who retired as a seasonal and then left in the middle, and we had to, they, we asked them to, they had to submit another request. This sounds like a lot more volume and a lot more turnover, so I think it could, we could look at this as unique.
My question would be, could they have six interns? And then, as long as they're not exceeding the six interns or the amount budgeted for extra help, would they still need to come back to kind of rotate those six interns? Sure. If, if, if the Board, the Board can approve it that way. So you, you could approve it saying, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna approve this hiring freeze exemption, allow them to have up to six interns working at, employed. But understanding that if somebody leaves, they're able to fill that sixth spot or, or fifth spot or whatever, without coming back for an exemption. That would have to be a, the Board would have to take action on that. Because the way the policy is written right now, they do have, you know, departments and offices do, whenever there's a vacancy, they have to come back and get that exception. So.
So is that abnormal, is six interns for the year? And I asked that because it's unclear in the, the request here, because it says we'd like to forego the limit of three interns. And so does that mean?
The, the three.
Twelve interns, what, you know, it was unclear to me.
Sure. What's written in here, the three interns, they came back in, I think it was May, and, and requested to hire three. So, so even though they typically had more interns that they employed, at that time, they hired, they asked for an exemption to it, hire three, based on our hiring freeze policy. So that's, they, so they want to go above and beyond that three number, is, was what it means. The number. And just for a little history, the way it, it works before the hiring freeze is, just like the County Attorney said, interviews would happen before the current interns leave, and they, they would come on while the current interns were there and would kind of help train each other and guide the new ones in, and then they would leave, and it's kind of like a rolling.
So this allows some overlap?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we, we actually have four to, four to six that we, that are typically extra help undergrad interns, and then we have two law school interns typically that cycle through also.
So to answer your question as far as precedent setting, this is a unique situation. It's an annual program that they have, interns are coming in and out. It wouldn't set precedence on any regular full-time or part-time positions, in my opinion.
So would we need, so just clarifying, would there, we need to be looking at a motion of two different, of one regarding the hiring of interns, and then second to hire whenever they need without going through an exemption request?
No, I think you could do one. You can, you can give, you know, grant the hiring exemption freeze for the Attorney's Office interns, as long as it doesn't go over budgeted, you know, and if you want to put an end date on it, that's up to the Board. As of right now, I haven't come to the Board and asked, made a request to lift the hiring freeze, but I think we still have some, some information to gather before we have enough information to do that. So, you know, I don't know if you want to make it effective this fiscal year, or if you want to go into next fiscal year, or just not even put a date on it. That would be up to the Board.
Comment? I guess I don't have a problem with how many interns they have, as long as it fits with the budget. You know, I can see you might have interns for fewer hours than were budgeted. I wouldn't want to see, well, we haven't adjusted your budget yet. I wouldn't want to see this increasing the budget line item. That's my issue with it, if it's, you know. So, but that's, you know, that's all.
Okay, so if I captured this correctly, would there be a motion to grant the hiring freeze exemption for the Attorney's Office interns and to hire interns with, to hire the interns on an ongoing basis without going over the approved budget? Did I get that? Or how would, do you have a better way to, to phrase that?
Maybe to, to remove the interns from the hiring freeze process?
The County Attorney.
County Attorney's interns. And allow, because that just says they won't have to come back to us for an exemption, if we just remove the County Attorney interns from the hiring freeze process. Isn't that what we're doing?
Well, it's that, but you're also allowing them to hire the.
And you, the Board takes action on every hire. So prior to that individual starting, the Board will see an action form for an intern, and the Board will make a decision on that.
So it becomes a one-step process for you rather than a two-step process. So I think all we have to do today is remove the County Attorney's interns from the hiring freeze process. Do you agree?
Yeah. Is that right? But I thought he was also requesting to hire. He guesses that it's if we. If you just remove that, then he could come forward and.
Then he can come forward with that, because I'll always have to come forward for the hiring with the person.
So he'd have to come forward again, is what I'm saying.
Well, it's, it's on consent.
Okay. So, so the Board, if the Board waives the hiring freeze for the County Attorney interns, as long as, you know, interns are hired and, and within their extra help line item, then what they would do, what the Board would see, is just an action form on consent to hire that intern.
Okay.
Instead of coming back and saying, we need this position exempted. So they, they're doing it as a whole program, not an individual position.
Right, I get that. I just meant that we're clear, because there's really two portions in this request, was to hire the interns and to hire whenever, without having to go through the exemption request.
Yes.
So that's why I just want to make sure that we are clear with what we're doing here, so that the County Attorney knows what we're, what we're doing.
Yep.
So, based on what Supervisor Merkin said, if I caught it correctly, is there a motion to remove the County Attorney interns from the hiring freeze process and for them to stay within the extra help budget line item? So moved. Seconded. Okay. Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Hedin's? Aye.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for Conservation Administrative Assistant Two position. Is Mike on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Thanks for your time this morning. This is just a request to move forward with hiring for a vacancy that was just recently created as, with our administrative assistant position. This is a budgeted position, and we're just asking for your approval to move forward and, and fill this vacancy now.
Any questions, Board? No? Is there a motion to approve the hiring freeze exemption request for Conservation Administrative Assistant Two position? So moved. Seconded. Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Hedin's? Aye. Thanks, Mike. Oh, and then there we have another one. Discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for Conservation seasonal positions.
Yes, thank you as well. So these are normal, again, budgeted positions, seasonal positions that we have during the summer season, that help in all aspects of our program, from field staff to law enforcement with our IRVM program, and then with our environmental education program. We're asking right now to, for your approval to move forward with hiring those positions. Again, those are budgeted positions. Two caveats worth noting. One, as you are aware, Hickory Grove Lake is, is not full at the moment, waiting on Mother Nature to fill that up for us. The waterfront aid positions work at Hickory Grove, and we will only bring those on if the lake fills. If for some reason that lake doesn't fill or gets delayed in filling, then will, that will be reflected in our hiring of those positions. They'll either be not hired or delayed. The other caveat here is our seasonal naturalists. It's just hard to predict right now what our environmental education program will be this coming summer. And that those programs, I should say, those staff, seasonal staff too, may be impacted by what we offer for our programs. So we, we may or, or may not be hiring those, those positions as well. But we would like to move forward with recruitment for all of those positions at this moment and get some people on board for, for summer work for us. So we encourage your affirmative vote or your approval on this.
Other questions, Board?
So Mike, this is Lynda. So there's six positions out of eighteen, it looks like, that you may not fill, depending on contingencies, but you want to go ahead and recruit for them now, so you're, you're poised to fill them, correct?
That is correct, yes. We would like to do the recruitment now and at that, prior to filling, which we suspect will be May, middle of May, we'll know better at that time whether or not those need to be filled or not. We did the same thing last year with, although we didn't, we did not recruit for waterfront aids last year. We did recruit for seasonal naturalists, went through the hiring process, and then we determined that we weren't able to offer the environmental education programming, and so we did not actually hire those naturalists last year. We're requesting to do the same thing this year to be, so that we can be ready with people on, on board if we do need to, or if we are going to offer programming and need their services.
So, that was good, yeah, good decision you made last year, and we'll trust that, you know, you'll, you'll look at the need again before, before doing the specific request for those positions.
Any questions? Yeah. All right. Is there a motion to approve the hiring freeze exemption request for Conservation seasonal positions? So moved. Seconded. Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Hedin's? Aye. Now we're on to.
Welcome.
Now we're on to discussion and consideration of the purchase of fiber for the continuation of the radio project at the Story County Justice Center. Looks like Nick Lenny and Deana McKenna and Barb. Not sure who's going to speak first, who's on the line.
Yeah, this is Captain Nick Lenny, and I'm in here with our operations, or our comm center manager, Nick Brazinho. And so this is part of the, the radio project that we're doing. Part of this project, the scope of work that Raycom is responsible for within the project is connecting the tower to a fiber connection point within our Justice Center building. The thing that they need is a access point or a connection point to fiber within our building to connect to. And so this ask here is to provide that fiber connection to them so that they can run their fiber line from the building out to the comm center site. In order to do that, because there's limited available fiber connections at this point that we're not able to access, we need to run some new fiber connections from what we call the D mark room down into our comm center. We had obtained a quote to do that. I think the quote indicates a twelve pair of fiber. Raycom would need a total of two pair out of those. Once that's ran down to our comm center, they would then connect into the two pair of fiber, which goes out to the tower, and then it connects our comm center into the radio system. The additional fiber that will be available to us then will be for future expansion with all the technologies coming down the road, FirstNet, NextGen 911. There's going to be some need for fiber connection, certainly within the future. How much is unknown at this point, but this certainly would provide us with more than enough capability for years in the future as far as fiber connection goes. And since this is part of the overall network, our request is to split this cost between the Sheriff's Office and the IT department.
Okay, is there, is Barb on the line at all? What? Oh, Kyle?
Does IT have anything to say?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
She led by.
Yeah, I thought I saw her on as well. Yeah, I thought I saw her on as well. Barb, are you on? Could you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now? Hey, this is Kyle, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry. As far as IT paying for half of it, I think I got to, have to leave that, leave that for Barb to make that call. But regardless, I mean, this needs, this needs to get done sometime before March, when they want to go live on the new, on the new radios.
Available?
We just, we just don't have, what's that?
Barb available? Is she on the call? Or is she...
She was on the meeting earlier, I'm not sure if she got kicked off, or what happened there.
My understanding is we need to make a decision now, so as not to hold up Story Com. So is...
Correct, there's a, there's a three to four week lead time, once we pull the trigger, and we're getting, we're getting down under the gun on getting, getting it in.
Okay, again.
Can you scroll down, we should get the numbers?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question while we're waiting?
Sure.
So this, this project's been going on for a long time, was this a surprise, that this work was going to need to be done? I guess I don't, I'm surprised that this is unbudgeted, and it sounds like it was a surprise, that this connection was going to be needed.
Yes, the, the first time that IT was made aware that they would need that amount of fiber, or would need fiber at all, was in early October of 2020, and we've been trying to collect costs and whatnot since, since that time, but yeah, it was, it was a shock to everybody when, when they said, "Oh, by the way, we need three pairs of fiber."
I think...
Hi, this is Barb, I had trouble getting on. For some reason, I was on the computer and my phone, and my phone wouldn't let me unmute, so, sorry, sorry to interrupt, Kyle.
You're fine. I think Nick was in the middle of something.
Yeah, with this being, it's such a complex project, it was always understood that there was going to need to be a fiber connection out to the tower. I don't think it was fully understood how that connection was going to work from within this building, and that probably wasn't known until the October timeframe, and so that's when that came up. The other two piece apps already had fiber available long before this project. I don't think they had to do anything extra on their end to provide that connection point, but...
That's correct, Nick.
Okay, thanks, Barb. And, but we, we just didn't have that available fiber to do that, otherwise if we did, it would essentially be a non-issue, and we would just connect into that, but we're really at our limits with fiber for that, and certainly in the future, we're going to need some fiber to expand with things such as FirstNet, NextGen 911, and who knows what else we have for technology coming down the road. So it was always an expense that was going to be there, and something that, as Kyle pointed out, we're kind of in somewhat of a time crunch, because we do need to have this installed by March, and with the lead time with the contractor, we need some time to get that approved, and then get him scheduled, or get the contractor scheduled to do the work.
Well, this is Linda, and I am somewhat concerned that neither Mission Critical nor Raycom looked at this, because when we have, we had sites that were just from scratch, you know, out in the field someplace, and they seemed to have all of the costs that were going to be involved, and maybe it's just because they decided it was going to be Story County's cost, they just assumed that everything was fine. I'm a little concerned about that, I don't know that, I don't know if there's anything to do about it now, but it does make me kind of concerned about how extensive they looked at the Justice Center site.
Yeah, that's my concern.
Yeah, but, but...
The only, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Is that, that, I think it's the sheriff's email here, says it just, yes, or memo, that the city and Iowa State took care of theirs, but they already, they already had it, so it didn't cost them anything additional. And I guess I'll just express some displeasure someplace else.
Yeah, I don't think there was, I don't think there was, in my view, I don't think there was negligence on anybody's part, leaving it out. I think there was always, it was always expressed that they needed a fiber connection point from within the building, and Ames and ISU already had that connection point. Raycom had identified that, and as part of the project cost, to get that fiber from the building out to the tower, is all part of the project cost already, but we just had no available connection point within the building for them to tap into.
Hey, Nick, this is Barb. I guess for, where I'm concerned was, when the project started, Mission Critical told the group that there was a lot of IT-compatible things for this project, and that they would need to work closely with IT. We did not get contacted by Mission Critical at all, and we only had two meetings with Raycom, and at that time, they did not point out, hey, you know, we think we need an extra connection between the D mark and dispatch, so I guess that's where I'm concerned. I don't feel they did enough due diligence, and now we're stuck with a $12,000 bill. We do have extra strands on our own fiber, but we are saving those for future projects, and we certainly, if we gave them our four, then we wouldn't have anything for expansion. So I guess I'm a little torn as to why this wasn't discovered upfront, so that we could make plans instead of scrambling now, or at the last minute.
Thanks, Barb, I certainly hear your concerns, and understand where you're coming from with that. I think in the end, it would have been an expense on us, Story County, either way, whether it was brought up more openly, I guess, a long time ago with IT, or now. You're right that it does, we are kind of in a rush and a bind now to get it done, but I guess even if this was well-known a year and a half ago, it still would have been an expense that we would have had to put forth to get those connection points up. But I certainly hear the concerns, and with our connections with MCP and Raycom, we can certainly have those discussions, and see if there is a breakdown somewhere that we can try to mitigate for future work.
Well, yeah, and I'm concerned it just, it wasn't budgeted, so it's a surprise, and we, you know, we're trying to fit a lot of other projects into our current budget, and then they throw this at us, so I guess that's where I'm coming from. It, it should have been set upfront, I don't feel like this part of it was managed very well.
And I agree with you, Barb, but the reason we want to make sure you were on the line is the proposal is to split the cost 50/50 between sheriff's office, operations budget, and IT's budget. We wanted you to be able to weigh in on that.
Well, I guess I don't, if it's something we have to do, it's the same bucket of money, I just want it to be okay with the board. I didn't feel comfortable, and that's why I told Nick, you know, that's a lot of money, I didn't feel comfortable about going ahead and approving that without the boards weighing in on it, and looking at everything that's gone into this request for the new fiber.
Thank you, Barb.
Yes. Yeah, I feel like, I feel like we're all saying that we're frustrated, this should have been discussed ahead of time, this shouldn't be, this should not be a surprise, it shouldn't be coming as an unbudgeted item, and that's what you're hearing, Nick, is not that anyone thinks you don't need this, or you won't be needing this in the future, and it's not important. I think you're just hearing a lot of frustration with the process, and the, some of the players.
That is exactly correct, Latifah.
Yep, I hear that, and I'm not unsympathetic towards that at all. Completely understand.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, I don't have any other questions either.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the purchase of fiber for the continuation of the radio project at the Story County Justice Center, for $12,864, split between the sheriff's office and information technology?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's? Aye. Approved.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Board. Thanks, Barb.
You're welcome.
Departmental reports, we've already done the other reports, so we're on to upcoming agenda items. Does anyone have any upcoming agenda items that we should be aware of?
I was just thinking of two things that are pending, that we will need to deal with. We had a request from Nevada for a donation from the county for their field house project.
Right.
We kind of asked that we'd be given a few weeks on that, because we're in the midst of budget hearings. I would just suggest we have that later in February, because I just booked in, we're reviewing our own budget on the 10th, sent a publication on the 16th. I think if we deal with it later in February, that gives them time to finalize their cap grant. And the other then is, we just had a presentation on the economic development district, and we want to consider a resolution on that. Have that placed on an upcoming agenda. I'm trying to think there's any other pending things that we've had presentations on, that we haven't acted on yet, and those are the two that I was remembering.
Yeah.
From today, so I don't remember very well.
So, anything else here? All right. All right, I can't think of anything else at this time either, I think the only one thing maybe is, I will be talking with ISAC on the emails I received regarding that Iowa Utilities Board that are M U for, what, 0028 2020, I was getting, that we submitted a letter to last June. I've been receiving several emails to submit another letter, I don't know if that's necessary or not. I contacted ISAC, the person that I was directed to is out of the office until tomorrow. So I, that may be something that needs to go on the agenda, but we may already have it all taken care of via mute issue, based what we did back in June. With that, we'll move to public forum number two. We'll open public forum number two, the comments on the public, on items that are not under the agenda, the more, the board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. But this time, public comment is open, is there anyone who'd like to make public comment? Please unmute yourself, or raise your hand if you'd like to make comment. Anything, Liam? Okay, seen none, we'll close public comment number two, public forum number two. We'll move on to liaison assignments, committee meetings, updates, and announcements from supervisors. Supervisor Faisal, would you like to start?
Sure. So we've got budget work sessions this afternoon, and then Drainage District tonight, Drainage District meeting again tomorrow, budget work the rest of the week, and then there is a community presentation on the Story County housing study on the 20th at 5:30, and then again on Thursday, but I don't remember the time, at noon on Thursday, and I'm guessing there's a link on the website, or to the Zoom.
Same presentation.
And then asset meeting on Thursday evening, hunger collaboration on Thursday for me, and budget work.
That's it, thank you. Supervisor Merkin?
Oh, yeah, all of those things, and Emergency Management Commission meets Wednesday night, very quarterly meeting, House Watershed Management Authority just before the asset on Thursday, busy, busy week, busy week, and all those other things.
Yeah.
You probably got a couple more things to add on.
I do, so the same budget work sessions, asset joint funders, the Drainage District tonight, the Board of Health will be having a meeting tomorrow evening, starting at 6:00, that'll be via Zoom, so folks want to connect, and they can do that. I also have, we were discussing this, is there is an AEDC meeting on Friday, although I don't have the time, because I couldn't find the email, I think it's early morning though, so that's just the other thing that I have on my agenda as well. Otherwise, anything else for discussion? No?
More budget, the final budget work sessions are next Monday.
Right, right, the 25th, yep. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Will we adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's? Aye. We are adjourned.